Okay. At this time, I'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States.
And to the republic. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I do it. Like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda this evening? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be to consider the approval of the minutes of the last meeting, which was held January twenty-sixth. The city council does have a copy of those minutes. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
Move to approve.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Russ, approved of minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
John Edboom.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass and that vote will also serve the purposes of the roll call. The council is all present at this time. We'll move then to Agenda I number three. Agenda I number three is the North First Street, West Redwood Street, West Marshall Street Reconstruction Project. The we have two actions before us. First would be the resolution declaring the official intent regarding the reimbursements of the expenditures with the proceeds of tax exempt bonds. And secondly, would be the resolution that would accept the bid and award the contract. At this time, I'll call on City Engineer, Director Public Works, Jason Anderson to present.
Mayor. This is the reconstruction project on North First Street, including Marshall and Redwood, as you indicated. Complete reconstruct all utilities, sidewalk and street surfacing. Last week, on February fifth, we received bids for the project. This was the first project where we utilized our electronic bidding process and we think everything went quite well with that. So we're really pleased so far with with that process. We did receive three bids. The low bid was from D and G excavation, excavating of Marshall in the amount of one million fifty-one thousand two hundred and forty-seven ninety. The engineer's estimate was one point one seven million. All improvements will be assessed according to our current policy. And if there's any questions, I can entertain those.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Steve.
Jason, I was just noticing, and just a point of order and a question. The engineer's estimate was one point one seven million. Does the engineer's estimate include contingencies and the sixteen percent administrative costs?
No, so the engineer's estimate would be a construction estimate only, so no engineering would be factored into that.
Is there a reason we don't include the contingencies and estimate? Administrative fee?
I suppose we could. Yeah, I suppose we could. You know, the purpose of the estimate is for to for us to figure out how much we think the project is going to cost from a construction standpoint. We usually add the contingency and engineering at award because we'll need to take that into account as we move into construction. We want to make sure we've got enough funding in place to pay for anything that might come up and cover engineering costs.
Sure. Just something to think about for transparency for the taxpayers who are watching.
We'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Any other input or questions? If not, we'll take action on the first resolution that would being the regarding the reimbursement of the expenditures with the proceeds of tax exempt bonds.
I'm over the first resolution to declaring official intent.
Motion by John, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edboom. John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Then the second action would be the resolution that would accept the bid from D and G excavating and award the contract.
I move the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Don. Discussion?
Jason, just a question. Do you have a timeframe on start date?
We do not at this point in time. With councils award of the project, we'll start the process of communicating with our low bid contractor here and work towards figuring that out. We probably won't establish a pre-construction meeting quite so soon. We'll probably really learn timeline a little bit closer to spring. But we're very hopeful that with an early award, there could have, we could have opportunity for an early start. We'll see how it goes when we start communicating with the contractor.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edboom.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And motion passes. Just a technical item. Don, you, your voice is really low or faint. I don't know if there's an adjustment on your computer. Maybe.
Okay.
That sounds better. Good. We'll move then to the consent agenda. The items are up on the screen on the consent agenda, and they include the wastewater treatment facilities project. We have a application for payment to Magni Construction and a invoice consideration for payment to Bolton and Mink. Also on the consent agenda, consider the authorization to declare vehicles as surplus property for a marshal police department. Consider the authorization to declare surplus property again for the marshal police department. The chip ceiling on various city streets, the authorization to advertise for bids, an application for exempt permit for the Knights of Columbus and consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda? Any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Number seven.
Any other item? If not, is there a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
John Edboom.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Agenda I number seven is the chip ceiling, the authorization to advertise for bids. Jim?
I just pulled this because I, you know, I know we need to street repairs, but I think that our money we better spent on overlays than chip sealing. I've done a lot of reading, not research, so I can research it myself. A lot of reading. I'm not sold that chip sealing is actually a cost effective manner of repairing streets.
Yeah, there's been an ongoing discussion. Jason, do you want to address this at all?
Sure, I can weigh in for a moment here. You know, this is something that we're continually evaluating as well, councilman. In the engineering field, this is something that's being continually discussed as well. I think that there's maybe a drive to try to quantify the benefit a little better. You know, the historical thought has been that there is a benefit to a seal coat. It does extend the life of the surface and it is extremely cost effective and a worthwhile investment. And I think that right now that's still the belief in the industry, but they are pouring a lot of money into research to help better quantify that. At our City Engineers Conference a few weeks ago, it was a topic of discussion as well. There's a lot of metro cities are seeing what's called stripping of the chip seal from the surface and it's causing kind of pocketing to occur. So they're looking into evaluating why that's happening. We don't have a lot of that in Marshall. That hasn't been something that's been prevalent here, thankfully. But even in that presentation, when they talked about stripping and some of the thought processes and why that's going on, they still kind of conclude that they do believe it's a worthwhile investment. If you're just looking for X, Y, and Z and making sure that you're you're chip sealing a road that's a good candidate to be chipped. So Minna District Eight still believes in it. The current guidance is to get a chip seal early in a pavement's life as opposed to waiting. Historically, it was close to seven years. Now, the, a lot of folks are thinking, get it, get it done sooner. And we've kind of adopted that strategy as well. So most of the roads that you see are either new reconstructs or recently overlaid. And more specifically, a lot of them are newer roads with what we believe to be a good section, good drainage, and really good candidates for a seal coat. So we would still recommend it. We can get a lot done for the money. And even if it's only extending the life of the surface a couple of years, for what you pay to get it done, it's worthwhile. So we would recommend it at this point in time, but we are certainly keeping our ear to the street and we are communicating with all of our agencies, the City Engineers Association, Minna and others to make sure that we're evaluating this and continuing to look into it and make sure we're doing the right thing.
Thank you, Jason.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Steve.
So on that note, Jason, as there is a lot of discussion and research, would it be inappropriate to kind of do our own city of Marshall experiment, if you would, by taking two very similar streets and chip coating one of them? And not the other one? So when I look on it, you know, I'm looking at Viking. Can you see the roundabout on Viking there? Do part of that as a chip seal, like bring it around from Southview around to De Shepherd there, and then don't chip seal De Shepherd from Colin, you know, up the other side and see which one lasts longer. And that's potential. They should have about equivalent amounts of traffic. Very similar roads and just see.
You know, Steve, that's a good idea. That's actually where some of my research comes from. I don't recall it research. Here on the little corner, I live on East Marshall in Whitney. East Marshall was redone fifteen years ago and chip sealed. Whitney was maybe repaved fourteen, thirteen years ago and never chip sealed. So we've already have that in areas of Marshall, and I don't see a difference in the streets. I mean, and that's kind of where I'm coming from is, as I said, on a corner where that actually has been done. And we have other streets that we've overlaid that have not been chip sealed, that we can do the comparison already in the city of Marshall.
That is what I was going to suggest, Councilman Wazinski, is that in a way, we've got a lot of candidates to compare against because we do have a lot of routes that have not been chip sealed. I think we started really seal coating again in Marshall maybe around oh seven or oh eight. So, you know, before then, we've got all kinds of history of not seal coating. I would suggest that we don't have enough data on what our roads look like that have been seal coated that it just takes, it takes time to play it out. And that's probably why there's not a lot of really good substantive research on the topic because you're talking about decades of to really see the results, I guess. We still really feel good about it. We did try a different product on a couple of short stretches last year. A replay product where you don't use rock, you just apply the liquid. And we are trying that in a couple comparative areas and we're monitoring that as an option too. And and Minna and the local road research board are starting to re-research those products too. So we're keeping an eye on it. And I, you know, I assure you that it is still guidance in the industry that it is a good thing to do.
Jason included in this, I know last year there was also some, I believe the term would be fog sealing of some of the trails that was incorporated at about the same time. Is that included in this proposal also?
No, any future fogging or overlaying of the bike trail system will come at a later date.
Hey, John?
Just, Jason, I think you started on some of that discussion of what I remember and and some reading in the past on it. It's actually the newer the road, the more effective it is. And maybe, can you address that a little bit more? Am I correct in thinking on that?
You are. Minna District Eight is of the belief that the sooner you chip seal, the better. As soon as you lay down the new pavement, as soon as you can come back on top of it with a chip seal, they feel like it adds to the strength of the road section. And in their belief, probably the longevity as well, but they know through scientific process that it does add to the strength of the surface if you get it done in the first the first year preferably, but in the first two to three years, you can see that benefit. Once you go beyond that window, you don't see any strength addition to the road surface. But the thought process is that you revitalize and protect the road surface. Also introducing, of course, friction back into the surface with the rock layer. But you are correct. Earlier seems to be the way that it's trending.
Just in continuing with that, then, would we be better off just concentrating on the streets that we did this last year and maybe the year before? And just do those?
Our, our belief is that any reasonable, any pavement in reasonable condition with a good section and preferably one that's got good drainage is a good candidate to be chip sealed. So we believe that, and like I said, if we can extend the road life just a couple of years and delay those overlays, those are really expensive. This is, this is extremely cheap by comparison. So we're really pushing for that you're doing the right thing by overlaying these streets. And next year, we'd like to start looking at some of the routes that have been seal coated maybe ten years ago. Are they good candidates to start to get another seal coat? As well as, of course, some of our recent overlays from this year could get seal coated next year. So we firmly believe that we're doing the right thing here.
Jason, in reference to Councilman De Kramer's comment, it appears that a number of these streets are relatively new developments, new residential areas.
I'm just going to say Viking and David and Colin versus those out in Fairview, for example. Councilman De Kramer brings up a good point. Are we better off focusing on those and then, because we know, are we probably going to have to do a totally resurface on Fairview within the next few years? Or why are we going to waste money putting a chip seal on that? And just and my other question is there, these newer developments, are we not building the road properly to begin with? And that's why we need to you know, re-chip seal them or what? I mean, it's just kind of curious that I live on a street that I've been here, you know, forty years, and I don't think it's been chip sealed once. Maybe it has. I don't remember, but I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah. So there's a few questions in there. I'll try to, I'll try to hit them if I can remember. But with regard to Fairview, the purpose for having that one on there is we don't have that slotted anywhere in our current capital plans in the next ten years for sure, and it could probably be more. So we're just thinking that with a recent overlay out there, if we can try to defer more costly repairs or maintenance, that would be a benefit. Same with Eleventh. Most of the rest are either new construct or, like you mentioned, newer neighborhoods that got their first overlay. And we're just of the belief that with those our mantra is keep the good roads good, right? So if you have something that's in good shape, invest in preventative maintenance to keep yourself from having to come, come back later with a much more expensive project. So if you've got something that you can keep in good condition for longer, ultimately, that's going to cost us a lot less money. So that's just kind of the mantra that we're sort of pitching right now internally and how we're we're going about this. So new roads, new overlays, newer sections, you're absolutely right in pointing that out. We're not going into areas that may be close to getting a a larger capital improvement project. We're not going to spend the dollars there. Or someplace that's maybe already been overlaid three or four times. We're just, we're just not going to do it because we don't, we think there's probably enough other problems there that are going to cause the chip seal to not be a very good use of the preventative maintenance budget that we have.
Any other input? Good discussion. Any other input?
Jason, this is just, just a request to go out for bids so we can see what the cost comes in and discuss it further after the bids, correct?
You certainly can. Historically, what we've done when we solicit these bids is we we have a budget figure in the operating budget of the street department for, I believe it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars this year. Historically, if the bids come in and they're great and they're a hundred and ten, we can usually find other roads that are candidates. We usually have to stop short. It's not so we usually try to spend that money as possible. We usually have you award with a not to exceed of one forty. So that's how we typically handle it. But of course, the council can choose to do whatever you'd like.
But the bids will come back to council when you get them, is what I guess my question.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Jason?
Yeah.
Just one further question on this, Jason, about how much, you know, miles, feet, or whatever we're talking about on roads here?
That's a really.
Roughly a hundred and forty thousand.
That's a really good question that I'm not prepared to answer. I wasn't quite expecting such a good, robust conversation here. I didn't come with all my tools.
Perhaps when we receive the bid, that would be good to have and just, you know, you're looking at a hundred and forty thousand. If there's a lot of there's several miles on this, you're right, it's pretty inexpensive in comparison to a new road if it does last.
Well, I don't have exact figures, but that stretch of Forest Street that you're seeing there, if this was overlays, that's probably what you'd get done. And look at how many miles of street we're covering. And actually, this map isn't up to date. I sent Kyle one by email. I don't think he's got the most up to date one. We're missing a few streets. They're not colored in. But we're covering a lot of territory. Oh, he does have the right one. I'm sorry, Kyle, but this is the right map. So we're covering a lot of ground.
Okay. Any other input? If not, we've had a good discussion on this, but we do also have a recommendation from our city staff. What's the wishes of the council?
I would make a motion to approve the send it out for bids.
Second. Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edboom.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Agenda I number ten is the tabled item. I entertain a motion to remove that from the table for active discussion.
So moved.
Motion by Craig, seconded by, was that Russ or?
Russ.
Yep.
Set, motion by Craig, seconded by Russ. To remove this item from the table. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Don Edboom.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Wazinski.
Yes.
And motion passes. Okay, so Agenda I number ten is the, consider the request of Monty Buncher for the variance adjustment permit at five sixteen A Main Street East. I will turn to Ilya Gutman. I believe Ilya is on the line.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Council. This is a request to install a shipping container as a storage building at East Main Street. You consider it's a area behind the Lux Mattel and between Mattel and the school property in the back. The ordinance doesn't allow shipping containers to be used for storage. And that's why the variance request was made. Staff reviewed this thing and came to the conclusion that there are no practical difficulties which are required, requirements to approve variance. So the recommendation was to deny the variance. In the last meeting, there was some discussion and there was some suggestion in the council to allow it with some conditions to make it look better. And that's why it was tabled to allow the owner to assess the actions. Yeah, so it's, now it's back.
Okay, thank you, Ilya. The the applicant, Mr. Buncher, is, is present. Mr. Buncher also sent a correspondence to all the city council members yesterday. It's been provided to city staff. And I'll just summarize this. You can go into more detail. The he didn't address that concern about changing the appearance of it. Did address the his survey of the community, I'll call that, where he is identifying other other uses of similar shipping containers for storage that haven't been applied for, where there's no variance applied. So I think, is that after the summary? So with that, we'll open up for additional discussion. Again, the applicant is here. If there's questions you want him to address, but it's really back to the discussion of the council at this point with the decision on whether or not to grant the variance. Ilya, perhaps it would be also useful if you talk, just provide a summary of the zoning in that area.
Sure. So this is a I believe the general business district and the containers are not permitted in any residential or business districts. They are permitted in industrial districts. I assume there are some containers in the city installed. I do not remember anyone ever applying for variance for that thing. No, I do remember anyone complaining about that thing. It's, the ordinance was done some time ago because there were some some people tried to install it and they was concerned at that time, that there was complaint at that time about that thing, I believe. And that's why the ordinance came to be. They just, the containers are going to fit the standard city landscape. That's why it was adopted. Of course, the city staff, we do not go around and try to find violation of the ordinance. We act mostly on the complaint basis only. That's why I can imagine there are some containers in this city.
Okay, thank you. Just to, just to clarify, five sixteen A Main Street East is B two Business District?
No, I don't think it's B two because B two is Central Business District.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's B three General Business District.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Open up for discussion of the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Craig.
Yeah, so, you know, there's been a good bit of discussion on this following our last meeting. Very early in this, I did have a conversation with Monty specifically, and he had originally voiced his, his interest to me in doing this and was wondering, you know, you know, any ideas or concerns? And and I know part of the discussion that we had with is the use that he's going to do. And I don't want to speak for Monty, but I want to address what I took away from that and that my understanding is, is the materials that he's going to store in there, you know, have some significant business value. And when I look at these containers, I look at two things. I look at, at, you know, what would they or could they appear like? And if they're old, you know, multi-trip containers that are beat up and, you know, not, not colored well, and they have a lot of lettering on them, be what if it's Maersk or whoever the the shipping company is, I understand. the shipping company is. I understand Monty's proposing to put a new container, never been shipped. And in the conversations that I've had, and mostly with, with Councilman Lozinski, because I know that he was actually on the planning commission when the ordinance was, was originally cast, you know, not allowing the containers. And one of the conversations we had is that, you know, a lot of this has to do with both appearance and, and functionality. And the appearance would be pretty easy if they're not lettered or looking like a shipping container, that they're a, that they're a, a uniform, acceptable, aesthetically acceptable color. And as far as the, the issue of, you know, it's not, it can't be based solely on cost. And I don't think it is because if I was going to put something in of value and I wanted it sturdy and I'm weighing nothing against the Dakota storage sheds, but it'd be an awfully lot harder to get into a Dakota shed. And I don't think they're as secure both weather wise and for vectors or other things. And especially for neared wells, those things are made to ship internationally. And when you put a, when you close them up and put a lock on the door, it takes a significant piece of equipment to get into them. Shortage is cutting the lock. But, you know, if you want to secure that, they're pretty secureable. So I guess my thought on this is that if there's a way that we can give temporary approval, and I really think this needs to go back to the Legislative and Ordinance Committee with some directive or wish from the council to review this, that in the business district, meeting the, the aesthetics and uniform color thing, so they don't look like a shipping container, would these be so bad as, for an option in those districts? I don't want to see them in the residential areas, but, you know, is, is this that inappropriate that we shouldn't consider either on a, on a conditional use or a, or not a variance, but just a permit to put them down, no different than we would any other utility building. And I'm just going to offer that up for point of discussion.
And I will, I'll carry on after Craig's discussion. And I agree with you, Craig. I, I don't like the variance idea because technically we could get stung on the variance because Monty himself has said it's economic. I would like to see this into the ordinance because then we can maybe control. And I don't want to point at businesses, but there's one business that has these stacked pretty high in the back of their business, and they do have it labeled. So maybe we'd have more teeth to tell that business that, yes, now you can have these, but take the labeling off of it. Now, if Monty, we put Monty's electric on it advertising, you know, that'd go to Ilya with the sign. We have a sign permit. I believe that would be acceptable through the sign permit that we have currently in Marshall. So I do agree with you, Craig. I think we could make it work through the ordinance because Ilya, correct me wrong, but if this is tied down, this would meet all building codes technically too, correct?
No, it doesn't, does not meet the building code because there is absolutely nothing in the building code which describes containers. They are built for shipping, so they're built for maritime laws, not for the building laws.
But structurally, structurally, it's a very sound container. I guess I was getting that. If it's tied down, this container isn't going to blow away.
Yes, correct. I would guess that it's heavy. It's heavier than the average car. And structurally, again, they are, they're relatively heavy, they're relatively strong. I don't know how it relates to building code because I guess the loads that the buildings experience are different than the containers experienced during the shipping in high sea. So that's, that's a different thing. Again, in general, of course, they're strong because they're made for tough sea conditions.
So, and then Dennis, are you there, Dennis? The question I have for you is, is if we tie this into our ordinance, would we have more control over how, what they look like than giving a variance or temporary permits? And I'm still thinking of one business that has them stacked up with lettering all over the back of their business.
Right now, yeah, the ordinance prohibits them altogether. So you, you need to change the ordinance somehow. And you're right, I would think a conditional use permit would be a better way to proceed on these types of matters because the variance, this does not meet the variance at all at this particular location. You know, the, the requirement for a variance says the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property. Generally, that's a property size. You gotta, you've got to get a variance for a setback requirement or it's related to the terrain, you know, it's a rolling terrain that you couldn't put something on there. But I mean, this is a flat space. There's no, nothing unique about this property. This does not meet the practical difficulties requirements.
So Dennis, is your recommendation then to deny the variance and request the Legislative Ordinance Committee, consider alterations to the ordinance that would allow this use by conditional use permit in a business zoning property?
That would be my recommendation, yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, the condition for Monty to not stall him off because at, between now and when the ordinance could be revised, it's temporary and it would fit within the hundred and twenty or hundred and eighty day criterion, correct? As temporary?
Temporary location, or yes, temporary.
Okay.
Which is allowed in a commercial area, a temporary location. Okay.
In the general business district, yes.
I believe it, the ordinance allows up to thirty days as a temporary use or up to hundred and eighty days with the interim use permit.
The interim use permit, yes.
Okay.
Well, then, I would, you know, I don't know if there's more discussion, but then I would entertain a motion to deny the variance with us, with, with the council sending this back to legislators and ordinance committee to take a look at it to see how we can make it, to look at the ordinance.
I would second that. And Jim, just to clarify your motion to allow an interim use permit and as that's being considered?
Well, I believe that permit can be allowed anyway. So I don't think that needs to be in the motion, does it? Because he can go apply for that permit and get it, correct?
That's, I'm sure that's correct.
The only thing that I would ask if, if Jim would want to maybe include it in there is that our staff would use enforcement discretion while this plays out.
Um, I can put that in there too, yes.
Okay, so motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Now, discussion on that motion? On to you. You're okay with how this is?
My question would be with the motion as it is, and if I would apply for an interim use permit, if the Legislative and Ordinance Committee does not come around to allow these, and I've already purchased and put in place the storage container, what recourse do I have if it doesn't come to fruition that the ordinance gets adjusted?
A legal question, Dennis.
That is a good question. I haven't talked all the way through, but you've got a hundred and eighty days, the Legislative and Ordinance Committee, we can call those into session soon.
Well, you're, you're, you're correct. The risk, there is some risk there. Obviously, you've kind of heard the sentiment and direction of the council, but there's no one, there's certainly no action that can be guaranteed tonight of a future action by the council.
Sure. I just, it's, it's a little disheartening and frustrating, you know, to know that, like I said in my, in my email to this, to the council and the mayor, you know, you see these all over town and no variances or permits have been issued. Did I choose the right path? I want to do it the right way. So I know I chose the right path, but I was hoping that the outcome would be a little different.
Mr. Mayor, can I address that, please?
Go ahead, Craig.
Okay, Monty, you know, thank you. And what I want you to leave tonight with is that that the goal here is, I think both are, there's a couple of things here. There's a recognition that your request isn't unreasonable. I think your request is reasonable. And, and I appreciate your willingness to, you know, you're buying a new container, your willingness to have it aesthetically balanced. The problem that we have is, is that we don't have currently a legal, justifiable, defensible way to grant you approval. So what we're trying to do is give you the ability to do what you need now through a process that gives us enough time to go back and fix something that, that maybe, I mean, it was obviously written at the time it was written for very good reason with things that were occurring at that time. Because there were containers that weren't new, that looked like they couldn't make it on the Maersk over to, to another continent again. And they were landing in, in places in town that weren't appropriate. So that had to get fended off. Now we're finding out that that decision needs to get modified, and that's what we're proposing to do. I, again, like the mayor said, we can't guarantee you an outcome, but I believe in the conversation here that there is reasonable support to have a reasonable solution for this in the business district with proper intent and setup and maintenance that, that these are, you know, reasonable options in certain settings and giving it a conditional use permit gives the city the ability to grant approval with conditions on there, thus being something similar or, or possibly that they're kept in good and reasonable shape and, and not let run down or not maintained. And, you know, that's what we do with, with all the properties. So the condition just basically gives us the ability to make sure that the promises are enforced. And, and I think this is actually a better path for you than getting a variance. A variance always kind of leaves a cloud over like you're doing something that otherwise is not acceptable. And we think that it's just not permitted right now, but could be acceptable if we go in and adjust the ordinance to, to reflect that.
And to keep in mind along with you, Craig, is, is a variance is not issued properly in two years. Let's say, I know Walgreens at one time looked at that property next to yours years ago because they approached me about some property I own along there. They say, well, that variance wasn't issued in good faith or does not fit the need. At that point, you could be forced to remove it too. So, and I, and I do know you see other ones sitting around town. I know Jason and I had this conversation. They've had conversations with people. And I believe, Jason, you told me you've had people remove these, correct?
Working with one property owner right now to move some, that's correct.
So thi- this is a good path, Monty, and like, like Craig said, we can't guarantee anything. But through the conversation, they can tell how the council is leaning at this time. So I think it's worth the risk to set it there, yes.
Okay. Okay. Other discussion from the council on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect to my fellow council members, I'm just going to repeat what Ilya said earlier about all these containers sitting around. Nobody has ever applied for a variance and nobody has ever complained when they see one. But yet we have thirty plus of them sitting around town. And now we're, I, I should say, we're delaying Monty somewhat and putting, you know, yeah, we're going to give him a CUP or whatever for a hundred and twenty days. But, you know, I think we're just missing the point. He has, he has followed everything that we've asked him to do. He's come in, he's paid his, his variance amount and everything else, and now we're making an example of him. I don't know if that's the right word or not, but what are we going to do with the other thirty plus containers sitting around town? That's an issue. And I don't, I don't believe we should delay this any longer. I think Monty is, has been truthful with us and have been upfront with us. He wants to do this. He's going to put a good looking container there. It's not a shabby looking container. And quite frankly, I drove around town too, and I found, I looked at some sites that I had no idea they were sitting there. And they've probably been sitting there for ten to fifteen years. So nobody has ever complained, nobody has ever complained.
It probably. Okay.
Russ, just to, just to let you know, that's exactly what we just said. I mean, I don't know if, if we didn't make it clear enough. But, but we can't, we can't.
Just put it on there and just leave it.
We can't give him permission or permit to do something that violates our ordinance. We're giving him a solution to give us time to fix the ordinance so that he doesn't need to go through this or someone else with the same reasonable request doesn't have to go through this again. I think the process is actually pretty clear.
But he's also take the risk of that if, if it doesn't go through a hundred and eighty days, whatever, he might have to remove it?
Well, sure, but I mean, look at the pulse of the council. Do you, do you think, Russ, do you think this is going to get overturned?
So we will.
I can't predict the future.
I'll, I'll take control of the meeting back. The, we'll entertain any other discussion on the motion, Sharon, you have a?
I have a legal question and I don't know if Dennis can answer it. We're concerned about the legal implications of not meeting the the statute on variances.
Correct.
If the council approves a variance and in a month, the ordinance change, changes to what the council wants to change it to, what happens to the variance? Does it evaporate and go away? So thus the legal implication goes away as well?
Because right now, yeah, you're not complying with either the ordinance or the statute. The statute on variance and our local ordinance prohibiting this type of container to be used as a storage. You're, you're not meeting our ordinance. That's the biggest thing. But you're right, if you grant a variance and then the law changes so that you don't need a variance, I would say the variance goes away.
The other issue that was discussed earlier about this, and one of the reasons why we're trying to not issue the variance, whether it, it sunsets or defaults, is that right now, Monty's got almost five hundred dollars at risk for the variance. And if we don't grant the variance, we can give him his money back and fix this the way it should be. In the worst cases, he files for a conditional use permit.
Okay, other discussion on the motion? Everyone understands the motion on the floor? I'll move us to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edboom?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
No.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Move then to agenda number eleven, establish a aquatic center, RFP selection and construction committee. Sharon, you want to start with this?
I can, and I think Scott Vandermellen is on the line if the council has questions. But pretty straightforward, we did put out the request for proposals. They are due Thursday, March fourth. We anticipate bringing back a recommendation at the March twenty third city council meeting. And we would like to have a selection committee and that would then, if it goes forward, could turn into a construction planning committee, city, similar to city hall. And I did put forth initial thoughts on membership in terms of who could be on it. I will state that I know that Director Vandermellen did have another advisory planning committee for the pool. And it was a pretty good makeup as well. And I'll leave that to him. Maybe he wants to continue that committee and, and that could be advisory as well to this particular committee. But pretty straightforward request to establish this committee. You see the, the thoughts on the membership and it would include two to three council members. And I'll pause to see if the council has anything or if Scott wants to add anything.
Hey, Scott, are you on the line and would you have anything to add?
Yes, I am on the line, Mayor. Thank you. And I wouldn't have anything to add. Sharon explained that extremely well.
And I have talked to two individual council members who have expressed willingness to be on there. Jim Lozinski, as he's wrapping up his role as Chair of the City Hall Committee would be willing to be on this and that Steve Meister as the liaison to Community Services has also indicated his willingness. Open up for discussion in the council? Now, is there a motion to establish this committee?
I'll make that motion.
I would second.
Motion by John, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer? Craig?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edboom?
Yeah.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
No.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion passes. Agenda number twelve, consider the authorization to purchase two seventy-two inch commercial mowers for the Parks Department. Preston Stensrud is with us this evening to address any questions about the recommendation. Welcome, Preston.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Time we have the recommendation to kind of continue what we started last year and getting our mowers in the Parks Department on a biannual, or sorry, every other year, biannual, that'd be right. Rotation. We got two new mowers last year and then this is the other two. We also have one at the arena that would be in the same rotation, but out of the arena. Budget, just as a reminder to kind of what we were, where we were at, the mowers have a two-year warranty. Kibble's agreed, similar to what they've done with wastewater, to do, uh, two thousand dollars per year trade-in. Um, so for some reason, we need to, we could do it at one year for two thousand dollars, or two years for four thousand dollars per mower. Um, I will note that the one mower, um, in with the recommendation, the nine-nine-seven-R, actually has a three-year warranty. Um, so there again, we, we, we have options, two, four, or six, um, to keep them into warranty. Um, I know, I think Craig and Jim, um, I talked about the importance of keeping these under the warranty and with being on the equipment review committee. And one of the new mowers we got last year, um, the computer module and all the electronics went out this fall. Um, and it would have been about a twelve to thirteen thousand dollar bill, had it been out of warranty. Um, so versus what we're getting, um, to replace them every two years, it's definitely, um, in the best interest to keep them under warranty. And just like cars, they're getting more electronics, um, and stuff like that, where we just don't really dare touch them. Um, with all the regen stuff on there and the, the emissions and stuff, it's just nothing we're going to really monkey with. Um, so with that, we did have thirty-eight thousand in the budget. Um, I think the total of these two mowers came in at thirty-seven-nine. Um, I had emailed Sharon and Scott and the council members that were on the equipment review committee, a little bit different number, but John, you did have a price increase on the fifteen-seventy-five mowers. Um, I think it was about a six or seven hundred dollar difference, but we are still under budget, um, for what was in the twenty-twenty-one budget for both mowers. Um, with that, I'll answer any questions if there are any.
Okay. Thank you, Preston. Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve?
So my question is the standard one. Is this the best price? Um, and on the state website or state option, is this the best price? And do we only get deer, or are there other options?
Um, as far as the best price, this price, um, through Kibble is actually better than what's offered on the state contract. I don't know what that is about mowers, same with, we have the striping mowers for like Legion Field and, um, the New Amateur Sports Complex. It's like four thousand dollars less to buy through Toro than it is the state contract. It doesn't really make any sense to me, but that's just the way it is. Um, so that, that answered that question, Steve. And then as far as the options, we, we have had some other um, mowers in the past that we had significant troubles with. Um, so we just kind of started to steer away and kind of go towards this. We also do have um, three attachments that we use for snow removal, um, that would make these compatible with all those attachments versus if we have one different mower, now we have to have three different attachments again. Um, for, we have two different sized snow blowers and a broom, so.
Thank you. And just one more question, Preston. Those, because these are newer mowers, those attachments are still compatible?
Yep, yep. Last year, um, with the mowers, we actually got a new blower um, in the, um, package. And, uh, they fit all of our older mowers and, uh, actually this oldest mower, the two thousand nine, it would fit on there if we wanted it to. It just doesn't have a cab, so it'd be kind of cold in the winter.
And is there any advantage to buying versus leasing in this? Because we're going to, we know that these things are, like you said, getting more technologically advanced, and if we think that we're going to have to trade them in every couple hundred hours because we're going to start using maintenance issues, does it, does it make better sense to lease?
Well, and that's why we actually went to this, uh, Doc Meister, is that, um, wastewater's actually been doing this for, for quite some time, and when we started putting the numbers to the, the repairs over maintenance after they get out past the warranty, um, and with the deal that, that Kibble and Deer offered us on these, this was really as we started running the numbers, a no-brainer to, to do it this way. It, it gives us pretty much a very predictable maintenance and operational cost, which I think is budgetarily is really stable, and these things, if they don't re, if, you know, once you start to have to regen them, if the, if the after-treatment system on the emission starts going foul, these things are just almost virtually unusable. They, they'll code out, and you can't do anything with them. So I just, this, as we look through this, and we actually spent a lot of time on this, this is a really sweet deal when you put the numbers to it. It's, it takes, we're having to spend a little bit upfront to get into it, but once we're in it, this is a really good deal.
I would just add, Steve, that, um, leasing is actually more, um, expensive. And then you're, like, say, you're renting, where now we own them. If in two years, we decide we don't want to do this anymore, they're ours. And, uh, we can keep them or trade them or do something different, whatever those options might be. And I think the reason is because the government discount from deer to buy them, like that fifteen-seventy-five, it's about a fifty thousand dollar mower, um, that after government discount's about thirty-two. Um, where your lease, you're going to go off that full value, so.
Thank you, Preston.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Preston?
Preston, thank you for our conversation the other day. I just, after that, maybe you want to address that bushel dump on the ninety-nine-seven-R? You explained it to me. It was like a bagger, and I'm really having second thoughts about getting a bagger for a park mower, so maybe you want to expound on that a little bit?
Yep. So basically, the fifteen-seventy-five mowers are a mower with a cab. John, you switched a couple of years ago, um, to, you have to order the mowers with a cab or without a cab, and, uh, you can't put a cab on, or you can't take the cab off if you order with the cab. Um, so the, the oldest mower we're trading in is a mower without a cab because we only have the three snow, um, attachments. So we have three mowers with cabs and one without. Um, so I priced out, it's a fifteen-seventy, actually, um, which would be the same mower without a cab, and it's the exact same price as this nine-nine-seven-R. Um, but I started looking into, uh, bagging units, and the reason for that is we, we run into some wet past few summers, and, uh, the ball fields get particularly long, and you get behind on mowing over the weekends. Um, and you get all that thatch buildup, and there's no good way to get it off. We do have that leaf pickup machine, um, that you guys have maybe seen, but it's really stressful on the turf, and it actually rips the grass out. So adding this seventy-two-inch, um, nine-nine-seven-R and the, um, bagging system, which needs no tools to remove or to take it on or off, is just kind of adding a tool, um, in our toolbox, and it's the exact same price as the mower without a cab. We're just gaining a bagging unit, basically. Um, so it's really slick, um, literally, it just hooks on the back of the mower, and once you have the, the hookup on there, um, you can take it right off, and if we don't need the bagging unit, um, we can just store it and use the mower as a regular mower also. It also helps with leaf pickup in the fall, um, when we do that in the parks.
Okay. Thank you, Preston. Any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation. Is there a motion?
I saw move.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
John Edblum.
Yeah.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And motion passes. Agenda number thirteen, the Public Works, uh, Mapping and Information Update. I'll turn once again to Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Mayor, um, Kyle, I will try to share my screen, um, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, let me know if you can see my screen.
We do.
We got it.
Okay, great. Um, well, thank you, Mayor, and, um, you know, with the little bit lighter council agenda this week, um, our administrator and myself were just speaking, and, and we decided that we maybe have some time just to show the council, um, our, our newer mapping program that we've been partnering with MMU on. Um, MMU's been using, using this Esri ArcGIS program for a number of years now. And, uh, starting maybe three years ago, uh, the city marshal started to work with them and partner through our cooperative agreement to get our infrastructure put into this map, and I just thought I'd take a moment to show it to you and give you an idea of what we're, what we're working with for infrastructure databasing. Or, I guess. So I hope I don't bore you too much, but you can stop me at any time if you have any, any questions. I'm just going to ramble for a few minutes here. I'll zoom in just to kind of give you an idea. So what we have is this thing out of the way. We've got all kinds of different layers in the map that identify different types of data. So we've got MMU's electric layer. We can toggle off. We can toggle off, uh, fiber and maybe easements, and you can start to strip down and really see what you're trying to look at. So, uh, this is a really powerful tool. Uh, we're really excited about where we're going to be able to do with it as we continue to get more and more data into the program. To give you an idea, um, you know, the green line here is a sanitary sewer, and we've got, this is actually on its location, and now it's placed over at the aerial. And we can click on that, and this is our numbering system for the manhole. It's how we uh, communicate with our, our wastewater department and how we all identify what manhole we're referring to. Uh, we've got the condition, uh, we know what size the pipes are coming in and out of the manhole, how deep they are roughly, um, what condition they're in, and then the elevation of the casting. So that's all really powerful information, and we're just sort of scratching the surface with what we can really do here. And you see the same with the stormwater, and you get the flow arrows, so you can quickly identify uh, what's going on in a certain area. And, um, one of the cooler things with this is that it essentially replaces some of our paper block maps that we maybe have historically used. So we do have a few iPads within our departments that our staff can use, and if they're out in the field, they can readily pull it up and identify what's where and, and really have a powerful tool to use. Uh, we've given that power to, even the fire department has some of that information, so they can identify where fire hydrants are, uh, where storm sewer is, uh, maybe, uh, anchor it's over and dumps gasoline into the storm sewer. Instead of trying to call their friendly engineering staff to figure out what's going on and where that's going, they pull up a map and say, it's going to the river over there. Let's go. So, uh, it's really, it's really a powerful tool, and we're trying to get good data into this map and then get it into the hands of our team, and we think that'll really give us a lot of, uh, power going forward. The red line here, that's, that's a water pipe. So we, we can toggle things on and off, make it as simple or convoluted as we need to. But I just wanted to give you a look at that, and of course, we've got this system-wide. We've got every single storm sewer inlet and manhole that we're aware of, uh, identified with a GPS point and all the line work updated. Our, our staff has put a lot of time and effort into this. Um, you know, if you were to pay a consultant to do this for you, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands it would cost you in the end, but, uh, it's a lot, it's data-intensive. It's a lot of staff time. Uh, it's, it's really cool stuff. I'm really excited about it. So I just wanted to take a minute to kind of show you that. And, you know, MMU's been working with this for a few years and slowly building their map. And now with us, uh, combining and putting all the data together, uh, it's a really good deal. Uh, any questions on the mapping?
I would just say, first off, um, thank you, Ja- Jason, for that, um, short presentation, and it's also kind of impressive that, you know, the city of Marshall has prided itself in their, you know, good infrastructure, uh, sanitary sewer, reliable electricity, uh, robust stormwater management, and it's good that you have the, obviously, not only the technology to keep that um, up to date, but also there's the expertise on staff to use the technology, too. So thank you very much. Any other input for Jason? Just, uh, John?
Yeah, comment if I can. Uh, I know just MMU meetings, uh, this comes up quite a bit, too, and they're very pleased with it, very, uh, uh, you know, really like the setup. Uh, one of the comments I keep hearing, those, it is intense to, uh, you know, it's a lot of work entering this data, and it's not exactly rocket science kind of thing, and sit down and enter data in, and that's, uh, it's pretty much on an ongoing basis. Is that correct, Jason?
Yes, through our cooperative agreement, uh, we do a lot of the data capturing. We'll turn it over to, um, GIS team at MMU. Ryan and Kyle over there do great work, and they, they input into the program for us. Um, really good deal. Uh, they're very proficient in the program, where we don't have anyone on staff that's quite as proficient as them. So I think it's a real benefit for us at this stage in the game to, to share forces and, and get that done.
Just one thing that I did, you know, suggest to them in the past, and I don't think it's taken, but, uh, yeah, you know, to me, this would be an excellent internship for, uh, somebody in drafting to, uh, take this on for a summer and catch up on where things are at. And excellent experience for somebody that wants to get into this type of work and, uh, maybe have, uh, some good leads into potential engineering staff for either MMU or the city at any time. So I just toss that out as a suggestion.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. We, we have, uh, in, in the past, used our engineering, uh, summer hires to help us with some of this as well, where they uh, work under the guidance of our engineering specialists to go out and capture some of this information and, and get it into the map, and that has been uh, pretty fruitful. Um, another thing you can see on there is we have the easements on here. We, we have most of them, so you can click on an easement and identify that this is a ten-foot wide easement here for electric use. And then when the system's working properly, it's, it's not right now, but you can click on here and actually pull up the easement document. So, um, linking data is a big deal, and that's something that will be some of our next steps, is if this road was reconstructed, may, maybe we would have a ability to click and link the plans and pull them up. Um, lots of cool things. You know, when the sewer lines, we televise them. We know where the service lines are. Eventually, we'll take that data out of the televising reports and drop the service lines into the map. We just, we just keep adding power into this map and adding functionality. Uh, we've got other maps that we've created as well, if I can get some up here. Uh, this is our transportation map. Um, I don't know what layer I've got turned on right now. This one's just general. There's nice little cool pie charts. From this view, so many of the routes are city streets, so many are state aid, so many are highways, and they're all labeled and identified. Um, this is a sim more map. This is a functional classification map, where you can toggle off and get the state aid system map. Um, or here's ADA ramps. We know where, which, all the ramps or which ones are compliant or non-compliant. Green is compliant, red is non-compliant. So these are just tools that help us do a do our job a little bit better. We put our zoning map into here. Um, just continually, continually working on that.
You can probably include streets that have been chip sealed recently.
That's actually on the list of, uh, getting all the street data in there. So every street, you know, when it was built, when it was last overlaying, which, when it was last seal-coded. So, um, in between trying to get our projects done and managing the right of way and doing all the other tasks that we do, we're trying to find time to update this data and get it into this program. Um, and if I, if we're done with that, I'd just like to show you the website for just a moment, if I may, Mayor.
Jason, just a quick question. Does it also include natural gas lines?
It does not. These are only going to be utilities owned and operated by the city marshal or Marshall Municipal Utilities.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. At the city website, I just wanted to take a quick second to show you where, um, we've got some information. Uh, Jesse Dean's been doing a really good job of updating our website and, and just getting good information out there. So if you click on the Public Works tab, and you come down over here, you could click on Engineering. And here we have listed, um, current projects in bidding, and you could click that. We've got our ten-year CIP listed. We've got a five-year CIP map listed. I can just kind of show you what that looks like. So the five-year project list is, is right here. And you can kind of take a look at where we plan on going. Uh, obviously, none of this is locked in stone. Um, these are just what we have on our mind as a staff of where we should be going over the next five years. It just gives people an idea of what the city's thinking about. It doesn't mean it's going to happen. It's obviously got to go through the process and, uh, with our council, all the approvals that we need, but it just gives people an idea of what the engineering staff, uh, is thinking about for priorities. Uh, we have our ADA transition plan posted here, which was recently passed and adopted. Um, you can click to the engineering permits. You can get your sump pump application. And then our special assessment policy, once we get the new policy, uh, signed policy in our hands, we'll get that posted back up there. Um, we'll go over here to construction projects. During the construction season, we'll post this map. This will be updated for next year. But here's the twenty-twenty project map. This is where we were working in twenty-twenty, all of our approved projects. So you just identify the area with a brief description. View a visual tool. And then, um, in this site, each project is listed with an update, and we tried to update these typically weekly. in this site, each project is listed with an update. And we tried to update these typically weekly. So you get a quick, brief project detail and latest update. You know, when the project was awarded, who the contractor is, where it is, you can click and see photos of where the project is at. Here we're paving on Forest Street. So we try to just give people some information about what's going on. And Jesse's done a really great job with that. Here's first street, we'll link the flyer. If we create a flyer and mail it out to the neighborhood. Oops, it's not the flyer. Must have a bad link. Typically, if the flyer is available, we'll post that. Here's a flyer. Everybody in the chip ceiling routes was mailed this flyer that gives them an idea of what's going on with the seal code and what to expect. And we'll post that on the website. So just wanted to take a couple of minutes. I'm not trying to roll everybody's eyes into the back of their head and put you all to sleep. I just wanted to show you some things that we were working on when we had a moment here with a lighter agenda. So any questions about that?
Yeah, I have a. So I really appreciate the fact that, that you've got at least a couple of the layers and I'm guessing the, for sure, the sanitary and storm sewers in the fire truck or at the fire department. Do you know, do they have them in like their, their main pumper or their engine company that would be their command set if they're out on something? Do they have, is it that close at their fingertips?
I'll have to check with Quentin how we handled that. I, I feel like their chiefs maybe have tablets with authority to access the maps. There's, there's a handful of them and then they go through the process of how they get that out. I'm not sure what their process is.
I mean, just having to go back at times with, with public works, especially because it's usually two in the morning on an odd time when, you know, Murphy's Law when this happens. And the fact that they could have that information that quick and that accurate is invaluable. And I, just looking at what you have here and and the, the value of those tools, I really commend everybody that's involved in this. This is, this is awesome. There's a lot of the communities that struggle to have anything even close to this. And, and obviously this is people's goals and to have it to this detail is awesome. And I really commend you guys.
Yeah, thank you. It's only getting better. And you know, we, we did work to get Quentin what he wanted on there. And I, I do believe he's got storm sewer, water, and I believe sanitary on there. We don't, you don't bog him down with all the other layers, but I think he's got those basic ones. That was what he was requesting.
Any other input for Jason? If not, thank you, Jason. We'll move then to agenda number 14 is, which is the municipal separate storm sewer system, the MS four report. Once again, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, with the lighter agenda, this is another informational item. We just want to make the council aware that our MS four permit is out for reissuance right now and reapplication. So you know, I know Jesse's already put probably, I don't know, eight to 12 hours into it, maybe more. And we'll get a heck of a lot more into it yet. So the permit's usually updated every five years. We're going on seven now. They, they went through an extended process this year to get a lot of input and try to make sure they were doing it right at the MPCA. So it's taken them a little bit longer. But we're here now and our applications due in April. Just wanted to let you know, you know, there are going to be some changes that come out of this permit. We are going to be compelled to be more measurable in what we do. They want to really emphasize data collection. So that, that puts a lot of stress on staff. It puts a lot of more emphasis on what we're doing and making sure that we're collecting and recording a lot of data and information. When you get down to it in the 28 page permit, there's a lot of meat in there and you know, that you're probably collecting data on 70 or 80 different things. And it gets, it gets to be a lot. So the application process kind of goes through all that and it kind of forces us to do a self audit where you're going through and applying and you're, you're, you're forced to answer questions in a way that addresses every single expectation of the permit. So, which is good. It allows us to identify where we need to improve. Some things that we can expect going forward are some ordinance changes related to chlorides, really. Salt storage is the big one. I think another big expectation that'll change for us is on our street reconstruction projects will now be required to instead of, instead of requesting that you consider a stormwater treatment option, you're now required to consider stormwater treatment on your urban reconstructs. And we've had some communications with the MS four folks at the, at the state and we, we think we understand what the intent is. And the intent is to do your best and document where you cannot, because sometimes in these urban reconstructs, we don't have a cost effective way to add ponds or stormwater treatment or storage. It's just not feasible. So we'll keep working with that, but it does add some more steps for staff and makes our projects a little more complicated. I won't waste too much more time. I just wanted to give the council an idea that this is coming and we are working on the application and we are working on the TMDL proof to prove that we're reducing our phosphorus output through our stormwater system. So we're, we're just doing the, doing the things that we have to do.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason on the MS four process? If not, we'll move then to agenda number 15, which would be to consider the approval of the city hall furniture purchase. Sharon, I'll turn to you, City Administrator Sharon Hanson.
Yes, we had a couple of city hall committee meetings reviewing furniture needs for the new city hall. We are going to use some existing furniture, however, with different uses in the space. And also because of existing furniture that no longer is compatible with some of the offices, we did need to look at acquiring some new furniture. I've had two staff people that have done a lot of work on this. Dave Parsons, our city assessor, has taken a lead on this actually to kind of fill a gap in this particular area. So I really appreciate his leadership and then also Annette Storm, who is on tonight's meeting as well. I'm going to turn it over to her. But I do want to also reference prior to that is that the city hall committee did meet twice today. They met at 10 o'clock and did provide a formal recommendation, which was emailed to you, I believe around four, four 30. With that, I will have Annette just kind of briefly summarize the quote that is in front of you. Maybe Annette as well, talk about the initial quote and the changes that were made to get to where we are today.
Thank you, Administrator Hanson. Can everyone hear me okay tonight?
You're a little muffled.
I have issues sometimes.
That's better.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, just kind of going over the process that we kind of took to get where we are today with the furniture. Assessor Dave Parsons did begin by working with one office on kind of loading up these offices that are, they're a little bit different in size from what all of our current furniture was. So we wanted to kind of load up the offices to see what they were capable of holding. So our original quote came back about 195,000. And that was with kind of max storage options for all the different offices. With the need is different for each kind of position. We wanted to kind of pare it back a little bit to see kind of what we could get by with kind of more of a, a, a basic start. What could kind of work across the board? So that's kind of where we took was minimizing where we could. And then if additional items are needed later for the different positions, if they needed additional storage, that's kind of where we're hopefully kind of building a little bit of a contingency for things that were maybe missed or just unknown at the time that were needed. So like I said, we started at about 195,000 and now we're down to roughly 130,000. And we're also requesting a 5% contingency, just so we don't have to come back for some little things that may have been missed in our original quote. As Sharon said, this has been to the equipment review, or sorry, not the equipment, but the city hall committee meeting. If they have any comments or anything that they'd like to make, or I, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Annette. Thank you, Sharon. Comments from the city hall committee?
Uh, yeah, I'd be happy to comment. I want to start with the original numbers and in the line item budget for city hall, there was 300,000 budget for furnishing these offices. Just, just to clarify that, that the staff was given a $300,000 budget and line item. And the staff did a very nice job of coming out with the original price of 195,000. Which, you know, at that point staff could have said, hey, we saved you 33%. They did not. So from direction of the committee, we, we did question some of the stuff. And they came back with the $130,000 quote, which I think is a very, very good quote. I want to commend the staff for their hard work and getting it down to that. The furnishing costs are actually 115,000. And then there's a $15,000 charge to put it all together, haul it in, set it up, which we did kind of kick that around at city hall committee today. And I just made the comment of, um, we want them to put it together so they are liable for the furniture. And I just think back to a council meeting about three years ago when my fellow council member tipped over his chair. If he would have got injured, that liability would have fell on to whoever did that work on that thing. So I, you know, we kicked that around, but I firmly believe that that $15,000 is money well spent because they are movable chairs and they are chairs and tables the public will be using. So, and I don't believe we could put it together any cheaper. I do know Annette is questioning the 15,000 because the original bit of 191,000 also included $15,000 for putting it together. So Annette has sent out an email to see if that number itself may come down to. But I know at our committee meeting, the committee fully supported the, the quote and we fully supported the 5% contingency of $7,500. So I, I know when Sharon sent out the email, there was going to be some discussion of 150,000 top price. I think the committee has set at, you know, we made the recommendation of the 130,000 plus 5% contingency. If the council would like to discuss the others, that's fine. The staff is comfortable with 5%. I think we leave it at 5%.
And I just want to go on record as saying that thank God when that, when that potential injury happened to both the faller and the catcher, that that was on school property.
I think Craig, what you also intended to say is thank you, Dr. Meister for catching you when you fell on your chair or something.
I did thank him offline. Yeah, I did thank him offline, by the way, but he was only doing that because he didn't want to have to take me to urgent care.
Yeah, I'm always there to heal.
So back to the JED item, the questions for either the building committee or any other comments from the building committee or Annette or Sharon on the recommendation?
I just want to thank.
Just an added comment to what Councilman Lozinski said. At our meeting today, I was willing to go maybe even go up to $150,000, but after thinking about it this afternoon, and if we can get a couple thousand dollar savings in installation, I think I'm comfortable with staying with the 5% for the time being. So again, I would recommend that we approve the, the recommendation as the committee made this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Craig, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just want to thank the staff and the committee for the work they did on this. I think that looking this over, it's a really solid recommendation and I fully agree with, with the committee and the, and the members' point of having the company do the assembly and installation. So with that, I would move approval.
Most by Craig, second by Russ. Discussion?
I just want to point out, Craig, that the council chambers and the, and the people come, we're still contemplating whether we put wheels on those chairs or not. So.
Well, some, sometimes we might need to just push people in and out. You never know.
Okay, with that, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Eve Meister?
Yes.
Don Edblum?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Chris Labatt?
Yes.
Tim Lozinski?
Yes.
The motion does pass. Thank you again, staff and the committee for your hard work on this. We'll move then to agenda number 16, Councilmember Board Liaison Report. The Fire Relief Association did have their quarterly and annual meeting this past Tuesday. The relief fund is, has of course performed well as the market has performed well in, in 2020. So it's a the, the fund is, is healthy and active for the purposes of benefiting the volunteer firefighters as, as they retire from the force. The management of their fund is managed by Bremer. There's been a couple of retirements at Bremer, Marshall. So the management is actually being done now out of the Mankato Office of Bremer. But it's still the same account manager who is actually in the Twin Cities. So that's the Fire Relief Association, Southwest Regional Development Commission, the revolving loan fund committee that I chair has met a couple of times since we last met. The COVID RLF, which was a $1.48 million grant that was received last summer for loans in the region. There's approximately $240,000 left in that fund. So it's a very actively loaned out and it's a favorable interest rate and is a revolving loan fund. So those funds then will be repaid and then retain, retained for relending in the region for job creation, business development in the region. The Southwest Regional Development Commission, I also serve on their audit committee and the audit committee will meet this, actually tomorrow afternoon and their monthly board meeting then will be on Thursday of this week. So lots of activity with the Regional Development Commission. With that, Craig, let's move to your end.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I want to have everybody pay attention on the administrative report to take a look at the activities on the Merit Center. A pretty good summary there. Even with the COVID, there's a, there's a quite a bit happening there. There's some pretty notable training, both in fire and law enforcement that's going on there with a, with a good regional and almost statewide emphasis. So that, that really represents the, the investment of both the community and the state in Merit as a, as a regional training center and, and asset. So again, you know, good, good kudos to, you know, to our management and our, and our staff there. And then also the Southwest Radio Board met last week and Alex Peterson sits on that group as he's kind of the turned into the, an absolute rock star with that group. And it mostly faces, focuses on law enforcement and fire. And it's the statewide radio group and it also includes a lot of interstate operability. And we also house the regional communications truck and Alex took it upon, you know, took the leadership and got a grant and updated the equipment in that communications truck and gave it a, gave it a test flight or an example flight to the group at the last meeting. And the capabilities that are in that are absolutely amazing. And that's the kind of thing that really goes unnoticed during any incident. It was used during the first testing, community wide testing event that happened in July. Those communications were invaluable. A lot of, a lot of weather issues there. And both Alex's knowledge and, and talent and willingness to engage along with Marshall Police Department and the city staff. Absolutely commendable, but just want to give a kudos to Alex for all the time and hard work that he puts in there. And of course, if you've been at the Red Baron Arena and Expo with the, you know, with the ice dogs there and, and all the work and Alex and his staff and, and the mentorship that he gives to other people that help with all the technology that's at Red Baron. Just it's, it's absolutely amazing and very commendable. And I just want to recognize him for that and for the value added that he brings to all of those different entities that he engages with. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Steve, your liaison report?
Yes, so Cable Commission did not meet. The Community Services Advisory Board did, but I was unable to make it secondary to some work issues. The EDA meets next week.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Don?
Uh, the Planning Commission will be meeting next week and the public housing, I guess I missed that yesterday unknowingly, but we'll get that on my schedule here shortly.
Okay, thank you, Don. John?
The, oh, let's see. Councilman Meister already talked about the EDA. Just one thing back from the discussion on MMU. uh, there was a very, uh, technical discussion that, uh, probably was the only one that really enjoyed that between what was they're trying to really describe to the commission and, uh, did that, uh, those of you noticed there's a slight increase in your voltage on the, uh, system that they put out. So it's really tried to avoid any brownout situations or, uh, uh, settings on that. So, uh, our, uh, um, manager of the MMU did a very good discussion on, uh, why that was necessary. So, uh, and the commission stayed with it and survived it. So, uh, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission, uh, has been meeting, uh, working on, uh, finalizing the, uh, 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 members of the commission as well as working on the bylaws, getting our guidelines set up, really doing a lot of the, uh, necessary background, getting ready to really kick off a full commission and jump right into it. So that is going on. I would bring up that, um, coming up, I believe the 23rd is the date, uh, um, is, uh, Cultures on the Prairie, which, uh, is held virtually this year. So for $15, you can, uh, listen in on all the conversations and actively take part in the conversations, uh, on various uh, cultures that are going on and, uh, you know, some of those include, uh, some cultures that have been around here for many years. So I think you'll find it quite interesting. It was very well attended last year when it, uh, took place and out at SMSU and, uh, they're hoping for a good attendance this year as well, although this time it is held virtually. So that's about it.
Thank you, John. Russ?
Yeah, Adult Community Center, uh, CBB and Marshall Area Transit have not met. Library Board met last night, uh, we approved the final job description for the manager's position and we'll start advertising that shortly. Uh, we're looking at maybe opening the branches in April, Cottonwood and, and Ballaton. Uh, we're going to be in correspondence with them or communication with them as far as, uh, the sanitizing of the, the facilities and the cleaning of the facilities. That's the most major concern that we have with the opening of the libraries sometime in hopefully April. Uh, that's about all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Russ, uh, what, what position, what manager position were you referring to?
Luanne Anderson is going to be retiring, office manager line over there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Um, and then Jim? Jim, I believe you're muted.
There I was being so profound at my thoughts and I was muted. Um, the, uh, the only one of mine that met was City Hall Committee and we worked on the furniture. I would encourage anybody, community members, drive by. You can see how the city halls are look, the brick is done. I call it the east wall. Some call it the south wall. It's not really lit in there straight. So whatever, but the wall facing mainstay. Um, the painting is done in the basement. They're going to start painting on the main floor. And the sheet rocking is all hung in there taping upstairs. So it's coming along very nicely. Any questions on City Hall or feel free to call? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We'll move then to the, uh, council member individual items. Jim, let's start at your end.
I left myself unmuted because I figured you'd say that. Um, all I have on that is, is everybody stay warm this following week. Be kind, check on your neighbors with the cold weather. If you know they're elderly and if you see somebody struggling with their car on Saturday morning, it was 20 below, help them out because it is going to be extremely cold. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Russ?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
John?
I have nothing.
Craig?
I have nothing. I, I did mine during the individual items. So thank you.
And Steve?
So I have a couple of things. Um, there is a issue that, uh, needs some, uh, consideration going into forward. I'm not sure if it's a city council thing, but certainly uh, we should have some opinion on it. And that is the paucity of childcare in the community. Um, you know, when we, we look at childcare, we look at housing. Those are the two things that draw young families into Marshall. And obviously if we want to draw business in, we have to be able to draw the workers in. So I think that, um, we need to do something about, uh, looking into ways to facilitate that with the, um, school district deciding to close the MECLA Childcare Center. Um, the other thing is, um, there's been a lot of publicity on, uh, vaccinations for COVID-19. Uh, this is something that comes from the state. Um, you know, we all want to get those vaccines into arms as quickly as we can. Um, the problem is, is that we have no control locally of when we get the vaccines. It is given to the state. The state then allocates to the big nine healthcare systems, um, throughout the state. Uh, believe it or not, Avera is not one of those big nine in the state of Minnesota. So we get what's allocated, um, after the nine major systems that are mainly located in northern Minnesota, central Minnesota, the Twin Cities area. And obviously the Mayo system, um, whatever's left goes to the rest of uh, the facilities throughout the state in a lottery system. That is going to be changing. It's going to go back to the eight uh, commissions, um, or coalitions as they call them. And so that may be changing, but it'll still be a lottery. So we are going to give the immunizations as fast as we can give them, but we have no idea when we get vaccines. Um, and are in no, we in no way or shape locally are in control of that either from public health or the hospital. So I just wanted to make that, uh, public.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. I'll, I'll comment on, um, the childcare question, uh, when it comes to my turn and then Sharon will probably have some input too. So thank you. And, uh, Don?
Uh, just one item. Earlier tonight, when we were having the discussion with Monty, um, I, I heard him say something about a letter or an email, just an FYI. I did not receive that uh, today or tonight. So just an FYI.
Okay. It will, uh, I'll forward that to you. That was sent by Monty uh, to people's individual email addresses and you know, Don's information is updated on the website, but for whatever reason, he must not have included that. So so sorry about that, Don.
No problem.
So then, uh, as far as my part for individual items, let me, let me hit on several things. Um, Saturday I had the uh, good fortune of, uh, presenting the thousand books before kindergarten. Um, annual event. This has, uh, gone on for a number of years now and it's really, uh, commendable that, it was a great program first off that, uh, these youngsters are are reading along with their parents, a thousand books before they get into kindergarten. It's coordinated by the library. Uh, they do a great job with it and especially this past year with all of the challenges with COVID that they were able to maintain that. The, um, um, you may have also noticed in, um, January, late January, there was a mayor for the day contest, um, or event or activity for fourth, fifth and sixth graders. We do have, uh, the participants in that. Um, we made the decision rather than pick out one winner. Uh, we're going to do a, a recognition to a number of people and, uh, both Amanda Beckler who uh, coordinated this through Community Services and Alex Peterson are working on a, um, kind of a, uh, video, uh, montage of between the, the entrance, uh, featuring the um, young people that were involved in this and then we'll, um, so that'll be presented at our next council meeting. So that's the reason it's not on. The, um, I think I've mentioned before, but the, uh, with the uh, activity and the aggressiveness of, um, economic development in neighboring states. Uh, that of course is a concern for those communities like Marshall, uh, that are close to South Dakota, close to Iowa, fairly close to North Dakota. So, uh, so we've been working with a four city mayors, um, consortium, uh, Worthington, Laverne, Pipestone and, and Marshall and us four mayors have been kind of working together on, on communicating with our, uh, legislators on the uniqueness of the challenges that we face, um, as, uh, close to border communities with some of the, the aggressive recruiting that's going on. And so we've been communicating by, um, any way that we can, certainly can't do it in person with our legislators and especially key legislators of key committees on on some strategies and really challenging some strategies that would be effective here. And that may include, you know, the discussion of, uh, of a tiered, uh, corporate tax rate, uh, for some communities in our area that in proximity, it could include some job incentives for retention of jobs in, in Minnesota as well as job training, um, similar to perhaps what some other states uh, have effectively done. So just, uh, a word about that that is going on. And then as, uh, Steve Meister, uh, Councilmember Meister brought up the, the childcare issue, while that is a, uh, really in the, the arena of the school district, it does impact the community greatly because as everyone knows, childcare is also then a workforce issue as, uh, families choose to, uh, either locate in a community or, uh, be, uh, participate in the, in the workforce. It's a lot of those decisions are really based on availability of quality childcare. And fortunately we've had quality childcare in the, in the community. And unfortunately there's the contemplation of closing, uh, one of the childcare centers operated by the school district and both, uh, City Administrator Hanson and I have had a number of discussions with some of the leadership of of the, the school district and really our request, and I'll be formalizing this in the, in a letter is, um, this is a time to, um, uh, recognize the challenges, but also take the time to ra- maybe find a solution. And that solution, uh, could even include um, involvement through our, uh, joint powers, community services agreement, similar to the operating, um, um, entity that, um, where the school district ask, asks, acts as the fiscal host on the joint powers for activities like ABE and like driver's training and like ECFP. Uh, but the supervision, the leadership, the employment is actually through the city under that joint powers. And that may be a bit of a, a solution, but certainly that will take. Um, and there may be other options too, but all those things take time. And so really our request is, uh, let's be, uh, encourage the school board because it's really in their arena to allow the time to really, uh, um, research, identify and find the, the best solution if, if a solution exists for this issue. So Sharon, you have anything you want to add on that at this time?
Just for, uh, Dr. Meister and Councilmember De Kramer who sits on the EDA Board. I think we're likely, uh, going to have Lauren Dytes, the EDA Director write a letter as well. And she will share that, um, with the EDA Board. And we're kind of waiting on sending that out, um, just to kind of see where the school district is at. My understanding is it had maybe some interest from the private sector. Uh, they have been analyzing different options. And, uh, as the mayor stated here tonight, I think our main concern is, you know, are we, do we have enough time to do further analysis? And, um, so that's probably going to be the, the main focus of, of the request. And, uh, see what we can do. So that's all I had to add on the daycare.
So that also then that's the end of my report unless there's any questions or comments. If not, we'll move on to then the staff report, starting with, uh, City Administrator Hanson.
Yeah, just on the daycare, and I know the mayor participated in, uh, one of the meetings. We've had several meetings with the school district, uh, Lauren and I. And, uh, have gotten contacted by a parent group, maybe as a council member you are as well. Um, but we do want to work with the school district on seeing what can be done. Um, we know that it's a tough and difficult situation for the school as well, but, um, if the daycare would close, it certainly would be extremely hard to open it back up again. So uh, taking some more time with, with, uh, what happens there. Uh, and just a couple, uh, really other brief items. Um, I believe the county is required by, um, the state statute to, uh, put forth all the long-term debt or the, uh, the debt report for all the municipalities in the county. Uh, I did get a report today. Our debt, debt did go up from 2020 to 2021. Two big reasons. One is the city hall construction bond of 6.1 million. And then, uh, we had an $8 million bonding for our wastewater. So, and, and I know I stated this several times, but, uh, just again, wastewater bonding is paid for with wastewater fees. And, uh, we have, and we're required, um, along with the water treatment to help reduce chloride. So we, we think this is a worthy project, of course, along with the requirements of PCA. And then the pool, uh, the, the city hall project, which is paid for with existing revenues and will be in part in paid for by, uh, the liquor store, uh, revenues that we receive. So I wanted to make sa- uh, note of that. And then just a little note on vaccines. I know this is uh, more in the arena of, of era and public health. But, uh, as most of you have, I've seen improvements in the vaccine. I mean, Minnesota has moved from near last in the nation to 14th in vaccine distribution. And I think it is getting better. We don't always at the city get kind of notice. I know today, um, I saw that Thrifty White had, uh, some vaccine available and the mayor indicated to me that Marshall had some slots that are now filled. But if we get, um, you know, kind of in a, in a rhythm here with this and we kind of have knowledge, we'll definitely share it with the public. Um, at this ca- time, as Dr. Meister stated, um, this of era and these local providers are really relying on the state and the state's relying on the federal government. And sometimes they just don't know how much they're going to get. But I've seen some improvements and again, we'll try to communicate when we think there's an opportunity for our residents. And I appreciate Councilmember Meister for bringing that up and, and I know, uh, the mayor is attuned to kind of what's happening out there too. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, one, uh, other thing perhaps Sharon to comment on, and I meant to mention this and I overlooked it, but uh, Lyon County had the rescheduled meeting with the EDA effort. I was unable to attend that last week because I was in quarantine. But Sharon, you attended it.
I did, and so did Councilmember De Kramer and, uh, some more, uh, discussion on kind of the goals of why the county might want to get into economic development. And once we got past that, we talked a little bit about structure. And I sense there's some, uh, direction to maybe look at a county EDA, which I think would, would be good for not only Marshall and Lyon County, but really all the communities in the, in the county, if they do set it up that way formally. I think it's equitable. And, um, I think then it gives the, the county the statutory authority to kind of get in the area of economic development, which right now, um, I don't know what they are using for statutory authority. And, um, I also sense that the county really wants to help small communities. And, uh, I certainly can understand that because we have staff, we have capacity. And, uh, maybe greater opportunity here in Marshall. I mean, we're proud of that in, in a way as well. Um, but if there's an opportunity to work with other communities in the county, we would like to be a part of that too. So I think I got put on the committee with Lauren to help have further discussions and I don't know when the next meeting will be scheduled. I think this is, could take a while, but we'll see. So.
Thank you, Sharon. Any questions for Sharon? If not, Jason?
Mayor, um, I'll just let the council know that we did receive five proposals for the comprehensive plan update. So sometime this week we'll be reaching out to the established committee to set up an opportunity to meet and review a proposed score sheet, get the proposals and, um, just have an introduction and, and start the process. That's all.
Okay. Thanks, Jason. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A closing time has been set to conclude the sale of city-owned property to, um, Best Topsoil LLC, which is the new entity created for, um, moving the action landscaping business to the West College or West Main Street facility. We will close on that next Wednesday, the 17th. Um, secondly, after about five months of silence, I finally heard back from the Minnesota Department of Agriculture. They have given their approval to the site cleanup plan for the Helena property. They've given the approval, but I do not know how long it will actually take for the implementation of that plan, but that's a positive step. And then third, I have started, um, to investigate and talk to the people regarding the annexation of that seventh street, North Seventh Street property, the 80 acres located on the east side of Seventh Street. Um, that was recently purchased by the Western Minnesota Municipal Power Association, which is affiliated with MRES, Missouri River Energy Services. So I've talked, I'm working with those entities to get the petition in place. First, they have to request a formal annexation of that property. So Mayor, that was on one of your top 10 goals of the year. The annexation discussions are beginning and we'll start processing that shortly.
There probably will be a communication done to the, once that application is there to, there would be two properties that will be, uh, isolated or surrounded. So they'll have the opportunity to be in or out.
Yes. We have had that discussion internally with staff that we need to approach those properties to also join hopefully in that petition and request for annexation.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any questions for Dennis? If not, uh, uh, we'll continue on with the agenda. You have the administrative brief, which I believe was updated, uh, as latest today. So that's for your information along with the information items, along with the upcoming meetings that, for the council's review. Is there anything else to come forward at this meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second question.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Don to adjourn discussion. If not, by voice, vote all in favor of adjournment. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.